So Michael is gone.
Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our study session. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Council President begs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Cathcart is absent.
All right, so we're gonna go over the advanced agenda and the consent agenda, but before we do that, we're going to interview two candidates for our planning commission. We have Tim Williams and Jesse Bank here. And Mr. Williams, I will start with you. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in serving on the Planning Commission and any relevant background you think we should know, and then people may or may not ask you some questions.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. I'm recently retired, but I worked for Community Frameworks for five...
Oh, what? We lost...can you hear him? Oh dang it. I use my... No. We lost sound in chambers. Could you keep things going?
This is Councilmember Mum, and they just lost audio in the studio for a moment, so we're just gonna pause for a second because we do broadcast. If you could just stand by for a moment.
And can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that.
Did you hear what I had to say then?
I didn't, but as long as the rest of council did, I...yeah, so we won't repeat it for me, but thank you so much. Did anyone have any questions for Tim? Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. Hi, Tim. Thanks so much for applying for this position. It's so important that we get the volunteers for our boards and commissions, and thank you for calling it the Plan Commission because indeed it is not the Planning Commission. It is the Plan Commission, so I appreciate that. I'm wondering, in your opinion, what is the role of the Plan Commission? What do you see as your role?
I think the role of the Plan Commission, there sure is a diverse work agenda for that commission. They seem almost like a mini city council, but I really think the comprehensive plan and then the growth boundary and zoning and development issues are at the heart of what the Plan Commission really does so vetting on and then recommends to the city council. And as I understand it, they were pretty good track record having their recommendations be adopted by the council, but that's primarily what I see as their role.
And if I could do a follow-up, Council President, how familiar, Mr. Williams, are you with the comprehensive plan?
I wouldn't say highly familiar. I read through sections of it, and I'm aware of what it is, and as a housing developer, there are some specific aspects where you had to look up things related to how did you fit into the comprehensive plan with the various locations you were looking at to develop. So I have an awareness of it, but it's not like a document that I've read, you know, end to end.
And then just my final one. Sorry, Council President, one more. What do you see as some of the more pressing items? You mentioned housing, the low vacancy rates. What do you see...because the Plan Commission typically deals with Title 17 in our SMC, so what do you see as some of the more controversial or pressing issues for the Plan Commissioners?
I think the rules and regulations relating to further development, further density, and trying to be more flexible while preserving some character to our neighborhoods and business districts. I think there's a lot of commercial space that could be reutilized for residential space, for example. I think that's an issue that needs to be looked at more. So I think the biggest issue really is the trying to make it easier for people to develop appropriate housing, smaller lot sizes. Some of the ideas that Jim Branks, the developers put forth, I know, have resonated with me, so I think those are the types of areas where I would expect to dig in as a member of the Plan Commission and look more closely at what further changes we could make to our coach that would assist in appropriate development.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mum.
This is such important commission. Usually we don't have all these questions, so you're not getting picked on. I just wanted you to know that. I wanted to ask how you would foresee your role, especially coming from the side of development that you've seen, balancing the immediate pressure for housing with the long-term plan where we're looking at the high cost of extending infrastructure and the costs associated with servicing high-density development. How would you see what you could bring to the commission to sort of understand the short-term needs but the long-term goals?
Well, I think I have a lot of contacts who are fellow developers and architects and people that are in the arena of building housing, and so I'd certainly talk a lot to those folks to gather inputs. But, you know, we don't want to just spread out. We want to spread up. A lot of people are interested in smaller housing, and we tend to have kind of a big divide between the single-family lot, which is a great big lot in many cases, and then the multi-family development where you're trying to get as many apartment units as you can on a certain lot size. So I think there's more opportunities to do more than's in between, if you will, in those regards. And also, I know there's certain regulations. You know, the city has an awful lot of regulations. As a developer, you tend to go, well, what if I go up to four stories? Well, then your costs go way up from a three-story building. And so there's various details in there that trying to make it a little bit easier and friendlier to develop and also looking at whether all of these are necessary to be charged if what our greatest need is in fact housing. So I think looking at where the city can be a little more flexible while still not encouraging growth out into the hinterlands where providing new infrastructure is really expensive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up into the hot spot at City Council right now. Yeah, hot chair. So my question is, and will be for our other applicant also, is as we look at developed housing and the disinvestments around some areas of our city, what type of equity lens do you think the Plan Commission really could start bringing forward to help mitigate some of the challenges?
Well, that's a very good question because we have certain neighborhoods where we have really high rental rates and low homeownership rates, and that's certainly one issue I know working for Community Frameworks. We try to develop housing and alternatives from homeownership down to solutions that help put the homeless out, so there's a range of things there. I think over time, other cities have been a little more innovative, if you will, with looking at things like community land trusts, with co-op housing, different ways in which you can like buy an apartment. The condominium law was broken for a few years with the high insurance rates, and so I think there's some opportunities in the different types of housing and trying to encourage a little more homeownership, which I think helps stabilize neighborhoods and then makes them places where people want to live and attracts more investment. And then the other thing the city's been doing is with the revitalization of the business districts from East Bragg to now, I'm talking about Fifth and Fisk, I guess it was, that was mentioned in the paper. There's some really nice work going on there. North Monroe, I think we're gonna see a lot more housing investment there. That's a really nice area now, so I think those kinds of investments by the city then serve as a magnet for more residential investment. And you want to make sure you're doing that in your neighborhoods that need that. I think Dorothy Spokane, there's some further opportunities there to look at and maybe an area where we've underinvested as well as East Settle. Thank you for your question.
Any other questions for Mr. Williams? All right. Thank you so much, and you don't...
Thank you.
We'll vote on you coming up, but you don't have to be there at the vote. We really appreciate your service and just even this brief conversation. Clearly, you have some ideas based on your professional experience that we're glad to see bringing to the Plan Commission. Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear. Jesse Bank, we can turn to you now, and if you could go ahead and kind of the same thing, introduce yourself, talk a little bit about what you're bringing to the Plan Commission and why you're interested in serving.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. It's really an honor to be here, and I'm so excited to be considered for this Plan Commission. So I am relatively new to Spokane. My wife and I moved here last fall in September. We moved from Denver, Colorado, and I think it was very much a quality-of-life move. We fell in love with so many of the things that we saw here, and I think the spirit that we saw in this town and the sense that the town is really on the cusp of some really exciting, some growth potential, but also some growth challenges. And in my professional life in Denver, I worked for a development company overseeing their design and entitlement process for sort of large-scale infill projects. We focused a lot on adaptive reuse. We did some affordable housing. We focused intensively on environmental stewardship and a lot of those elements. And so being heavily steeped in the growth conversation in Denver, I learned a lot of things about what happens to a city when a very intense wave of growth hits it, and I saw some things that the city did well with respect to growth planning, and I saw some things that the city maybe didn't do so well, or they lost the character of the narrative with the population, if you will, and I think things got very tense and very ugly very quickly on some certain things. And then had the opportunity to try out some solutions to try to smooth that over to give the public confidence that the city bodies and the organizations are actively working in their best interest. So in addition to the development side, I also have a degree in architecture and worked as an architect briefly. I was a home builder for many years, and most recently just completed a three-year term on the Jefferson County, Colorado Planning Commission. Note the distinction there. But that was a really, I think, a valuable way for me to bring my education and my experience to bear in a way in which I could serve the community and really help try to guide and steer that conversation around growth. And I know things are slightly different here with the Growth Management Act, but I think a lot of the pressures remain the same and a lot of those pain points remain the same. And so I look forward to helping to bring some of that experience to bear here for the citizens of Spokane.
Thank you for that, and do council members have questions? Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you, Jesse, for applying. The reason I'm going so deep dive into both of you as candidates, I am the liaison, the council liaison to the Plan Commission, and so I'm at the meetings. I see what's happening firsthand. It's interesting to me that you came here from Denver because of our quality of life, and I think a lot of the people who do come here from bigger cities are coming here for our quality of life, so the last thing we want to do is blow that up. So given that, what do you see the role of a Plan Commissioner? What do you see your role as doing, and keeping in mind that most of what you're gonna be dealing with are Title 17, SMC Title 17 issues?
Right. You know, I think a lot of it, you know, from a very high-level perspective, obviously, our role is to sort of be all of your eyes and ears with respect to land use issues, but I think a lot of, I think, what a successful Plan Commission needs to do in this environment of growth, particularly with an eye to not letting that quality of life slip away, is to be really engaging in an active dialogue, not only amongst one another, but with the community, and to talk about, hey, listen, there are two poles of any land use conversation. There's one perspective and there's another perspective, but really where we need to be as a community is in the middle and learning how to take some pieces of perspective from certain ends of the ideological spectrum and other pieces of perspective. So for example, I'm a growth advocate on one side, but a historic preservation advocate on the other side, and you can be both. I know that's not popular to necessarily be both, but I think for me, and what I would like to bring to the council, is that voice that tries to strike that middle path through the middle that allows us to accommodate the growth and to accommodate more people, but also at the same time to identify those things that do make the community special and work to try to figure out what safeguards we have available to us as tools to begin to safeguard some of that process while still working to accommodate more people. So it's a really thin line and a very tight needle to thread, but a terribly important conversation.
And follow-up, if I may. You haven't been here very long, and so I've learned, because I came here 21 years ago, I've learned is, you didn't go to high school here, you're a new timer, and that's the first question that some of us will ask is, where'd you go to school? And we don't mean college, we mean high school. And so I'm wondering, given your short time here, how familiar are you with our comprehensive plan and its role in determining how we grow and change as a city?
So I have read through the comprehensive plan. It's, as you know, a voluminous document, so I've not sort of gone through all the i's and dotted, crossed the t's and dotted the i's, but I'm definitely familiar with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive planning process, having participated in that process in other jurisdictions, and it's a critical document. I mean, it is that touch point to which all land use decisions go back to, and so I think, you know, on one hand, I can read the document and internalize the document, but I think the strength that I really bring is an outsider's perspective, is seeing how it's been done in other places and not necessarily using that to exclude ways that things are done here, but potentially to suggest alternative approaches or new ways of thinking that may not be currently in vogue here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, since you were on a Plan Commission, we don't usually get laterals, and I will look into our roles, just so you know. At one time, we had roles where you couldn't be on one of our big commissions unless you'd lived here for a year, but we'll find out about that. But that's not your fault. Can you give us an example of one time where there was a really tight vote on your Plan Commission, a tough vote, and why you decided what you did when you voted?
Yeah, I sure can. We had no shortage of planning difficulties around wildland urban interface in the foothills immediately to the west of Denver, and issues with fire and issues with containing population growth. And I remember one case that had to be continued multiple times because, A, there was significant citizen input that needed to go in, but there was also a significant amount of input from the local first responders and the discussions about whether they were even able to fight a fire should it get to that location. And so there was a lot of conversation around physical city infrastructure and what the city and the county can provide to a specific location, and can we rely on that really in a certain circumstance? And so there was a great deal of back and forth, again, between the growth advocates and the "we need to accommodate more people" advocates, and the practical folks saying, yes, we can accommodate them here, but they may, the neighborhood may burn to the ground, and how do we begin to accommodate that? And in that case, we ended up having to, I ended up voting in favor of denying the resolution because of some of those challenges, some of the practical challenges, that what can the city deliver today and how can we reasonably deliver services? So touching on your previous question about extending infrastructure out into the hinterlands, you know, that starts to be a major problem. What can the city do? But we had a really lively conversation going back and forth about, you know, what can we accommodate here, which values are more important, and ultimately, we did have to strike that ground that I think probably ultimately wasn't in line with my ideological predisposition in the first place, but had to take a more tempered and practical viewpoint on that issue. That was a hard one. That was a really, really hard one.
Yeah, those are hard. Thank you for sharing that.
All right. Well, as you both found out, this is probably one of the top issues of the council, so you got disproportionate questioning, and you both answered them very well. Appreciate it, and just wanted to extend my thanks to you as well, Jesse, for volunteering and for the work that you're gonna be doing. Looks like you are both up for a vote next Monday night, and again, no one expects you to be tuning in, but we'll let you know, and we'll be meeting not too long after that with a joint city council Plan Commission meeting, I think on the 12th, just a couple days later, something like that. So we'll see you then. All right. Thanks, everyone, and now let's...
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yep. Let's go to our normal process, which is to brief the advanced agenda of May 10th. Mr. Ormsby.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. On the consent agenda for next week, item number one, David Payne from Fleet has asked that that issue be deferred or continued for two weeks.
Okay.
And so, Council President, I don't know if you...
I'll invite a motion. I'll invite, is there a motion to defer to May 24th, item one?
No move. Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion hearing none. All those in favor of deferring until May 24th indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred. Back to you, Mr. Ormsby.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Next is a proposed two-year value blanket for equipment at the waste energy plant, and Chris Avert is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon. Today, I'm seeking approval for a two-year value blanket with Hitachi Zosen for purchase of feeder and grate parts. These components are used to transport waste in the furnace at the waste energy facility. This value blanket is not to exceed $600,000. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. The next two items are for the street department, and Clint Harris is here. One is a value blanket renewal, and the other is a proposed contract for repair services. Clint?
Good afternoon, Council President and council. The street department's requesting to renew a value blanket contract for the purchase of not to exceed $125,000 for the purchase of SA Premier crack sealant from Specialty Asphalt utilizing state contract 01211. The second item is a value blanket request to purchase no more than $80,000 of Nuvo Gap from Specialty Asphalt using state contract 01211. Any questions?
Clint? Just for clarity, what does Nuvo Gap do? What is that?
That's the multiplied asphalt that we put in the street cracks on the pavement, and the SA Premier is what we use in the smaller cracks. The Nuvo Gap is what we use along the curb lines, and in the bigger gaps, it does a better job of filling the void. So very similar products, they just are used in different applications.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Clint, why don't you just continue on with the guard rail repair services contract?
All right, I'd be glad to, Mike. The street department would like to establish an on-call service contract not to exceed $60,000 for needed guard rail repair services as they come up. All right. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Clint. Now we move on to a, the next item, number five, is a proposed amendment to the MOU with the Chase Youth Commission, and Carly Courtright is here to present this item.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, council. This is the Chase Youth Contract Amendment that I briefed at Ties last week. Specifically, we already have a contract in place with them. What this amendment will do is set the funding amount at $45,000 annually through 2024, so we don't have to keep bringing that back to you for approval every single year. Any questions on that?
I have one. Hi, Carly. Is that a reimbursed amount, or is it just automatic?
They, it's a reimburse. They invoice us essentially, so they don't provide any receipts, so it's more of just a set amount. They divvy it up for each quarter, and we pay them amount on that. So technically, it's more of an invoice than a reimbursement.
Good to know. Do we have anything in there about a minimum number of students or anything like that in the contract agreement?
I don't believe that we do. I would need to double-check on that, but I am fairly positive that we do not. It's more the contract details, what they will provide in terms of programming, and that they do have to provide us with a report annually detailing kind of the activities that they have done, which is on my list. Councilmember Wilkerson asked for a similar report, so I'll make sure that I get that out to all of council. And I'm also following up with Susan to see if she'll come present to City Council in general to give an update on what she's working on.
Thank you.
No problem.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I really don't have an issue with the amount, but my concern is cost increase, if they need to change what's going on. It feels like they need a, as the report comes, thank you, Carly, for that, like potential growth, so such a fixed amount makes you feel like they're really locked in to doing things the same way they always do them, so... Um, so we can go forward, but I'm just challenged, uh, with that. And while I have everyone, Council President, uh, we have three that, we have five that will be graduating this year, uh, from our Chase Youth Commission, and we certainly want to acknowledge them.
Uh, great question, and I think that's a, I'll clarify. We did this very similarly with, um, the community centers, uh, last year at the same time we did Chase. And then last year, we did increase the funding for the community centers, but that dollar amount is such that we can handle it through the minor contract process. And so we were able to give them more funding, but we don't have to take it through all of council committee to get approved. So if next year, you did decide to give Chase an additional dollar amount, as long as it was with underneath that threshold, we would still be able to give it to them and just handle it as a contract amendment through the minor contract process rather than go into the full agenda. So, so great point. This does lock them in at no less than 45,000, but if it were to be increased, we'd be able to still give that to them.
Thank you.
All right.
Any further questions? Uh, the next item is a proposed contract extension, uh, for support services for the Duncan Liberty meters, and Chris Becker is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, council. We are requesting a six-month, um, extension with Duncan Parking Technologies. Uh, this is for our existing, uh, smart meters in our downtown. Um, we need, uh, an additional six months, uh, so that we can finalize our new contracts and begin, um, rolling out our new parking, paid parking hardware. And the total amount is $22,176.
The, uh, the, uh, next item on the agenda is a proposed contract for Cisco Wireless Access Points Hardware, uh, and Mike Sloan from IT is here to present this item.
Thank you, Ms. Ormsby. Good afternoon, city council. Uh, this item is a request, uh, for will to use, um, capital replacement funds for, uh, upgrading our city's wireless access point. These are the devices that are throughout our buildings across to all of, uh, our plant for enabling laptops and tablet PCs to have wireless connection. As we stated, this, uh, this equipment usually has a five to six-year lifespan, and it has reached that, and we're asking for the replacement, uh, of this equipment. And it includes the licensing that covers the use of those products as well, and it's purchased through the NASPA agreement. Any questions? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, now we go to the, uh, uh, reports of the mayor, first for claims and payments, and then, uh, secondly, for payroll claims. And the, uh, blanks will be filled in, uh, prior to next week's meeting. And then finally, a placeholder for approval of city council meeting minutes. Uh, those items will also be, uh, completed prior to next week's meeting. Then shifting to the legislative session, uh, there are, uh, proposed boards and commission appointments that the council will, uh, be considering next week. The two plan commission members whom, uh, everyone met earlier. And then, um, secondly, the proposed, uh, reappointment of a number of members of the West Conrathiff, uh, project advisory committee. And I don't know, Council President, if you or any members of the council would like to comment on these proposed appointments.
Uh, so we interviewed the planning commission once today, but, uh, we don't generally interview reappointments because we appointed them once before, unless anyone feels strongly about that. Okay.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Uh, now we'll move on to resolutions and final reading ordinances. The first is, uh, continuation of, uh, long discussed Yellowstone Pipeline Company. And Council President, I don't know if you have anything to, uh, add or comment on relative to this proposed ordinance?
I do have an update. Uh, Mr. Zamblin and I spoke with the lawyer for Yellowstone, uh, to see if we could get them to agree to, uh, put up enough insurance to pay for a catastrophic leak, and they were not willing to do so. Um, so we were at an impasse, and the only idea we came up with was to talk with the federal regulators about how other cities are dealing with this issue. So they did provide me that information. I haven't reached that administrator yet. So essentially, we're not going to, I don't think, be in a position to vote on that next week. So I don't know if there's a motion to delay it. I would say six weeks, which would be June 14th.
Council President?
Yes.
I have a question. Did they give you a reason why they would not agree to catastrophic insurance? If it's so rare and unlikely to happen, why would it be an issue for them?
Uh, just protecting themselves financially. So essentially, that's, it's a question of risk. It, you are correct that the odds are quite low, uh, but the damage is quite high. And so it's a question of who bears that risk? The city or the company? And I, of course, think it should be the company, since I represent the city, not the company.
And so they're, they're okay with us taking on that risk?
They would, well, they would say that they're sharing it up to an amount of 100 million and then beyond that, it's on us.
I, I guess I'm confused about why we should share any of it, but if, if we're not the ones that are present, that are creating the risk, why could we, can you-
Yep.
Or is it just a rhetorical question on my part? I'm not even sure at this point.
Yeah, I don't think you have any disagreement here, so. Um, but just, uh, I guess, just so you know, I think a lot of cities have signed up with shouldering most of the risk, so that's, that's, I think we're the first to really push back on it, so. Councilmember Mum.
I would move that we defer this item to, in six weeks for June 14th consideration.
Okay.
I will second that, but I have a question first. So currently, we are still under the old contract, but absolutely little, literally no protection.
Yeah, there's actually no contract. We're under no contract at the moment. So your protection is any assets that they have and any insurance that they might have. So, yes.
Seconded the motion.
Councilmember Stratton.
So how long do we defer this? I mean, we've deferred it so many times. How long can we defer it until we, when does that end? And when do we just finally vote?
Well, the, the potential change of approach, I mean, it's been several years that there hasn't been an actual agreement, so. Um, but the potential change is we could pass an ordinance that would require, um, appropriate financial security. And, uh, Mr. McClatchy found an ordinance like that in, um, Richmond, California. And so I, I would say, since, unless the federal regulators come up with something, uh, that's probably what I would recommend, is that we go down that road and then, um, we might have to go to court at some point. But, uh, there was some thought that, you know, they agreed to negotiate with us, that they would, so that doesn't look like, and, and again, I want to be clear, they were not rude or unreasonable and anything like that. It's just that they're under some marching orders as, as well as our lawyers are as well.
I guess my question is, do we keep this on the agenda and keep deferring it? Or do we, depending on how we vote, let's say everybody's against this, can't we just vote no and be done with the issue and then go to the ordinance piece you've talked about? Start over?
Yeah. Um, probably the, if you were going to go that direction, the probably you would just table it indefinitely instead of till June 24th, so.
Okay.
But the, the current motion is June 24th.
Council President, I'd like to make a friendly amendment then to table, to table it.
Indefinitely? All right.
Indefinitely, at the rate we're going.
You're, you have to direct that to Ms. Mum, if she wants to do that.
Well, I'm just off of Council President preference, because that was what you asked. You asked to defer it for six weeks and finish this up, and you're the one that's been doing all the heavy lifting. So Council President, i- if you have a different direction you want to go, I'm happy to support that. I will say that my understanding in this new agreement was we'd actually get paid something instead of nothing. Is that correct?
A very small amount of money, but yeah.
Yeah, it's small, but.
Yep.
So what's your preference?
Well, my preference, I'm convinced by Councilmember Stratton, my preference would be tabled indefinitely because we keep coming back with new dates and people think it's going to be on and it's not ready. So I think we should wait till it's actually, something is ready.
That's fine. Let's move to table it indefinitely. I'm fi- I'm happy with that.
Okay. And I'll take that as a second. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed nay? Abstentions? All right. It's tabled indefinitely. Uh, fully, we'll get a report back from Mr. McClatchy on what we can do. All right. Back to you, Mr. Ormsby.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, next is the, uh, the, uh, final reading ordinance on relating to reserve accounts. And Michelle Hughes, uh, briefed this at last week's meeting, but I see that Michelle is on the call today if council members have any additional questions or issues that they would like to discuss. Then we would move to, um, first reading ordinances, and the first relates to some cleanup for, uh, parking, uh, codes. And Chris Becker, I see is still on the phone. Um, Chris, any, um, comments you'd like to make? I think lots of this has previously been discussed, but take it away.
For sure. So this is just, um, the code package, the update of the parking-related municipal codes. Um, we've brought this to council at, uh, several meetings, uh, most recently at the finance committee meeting last month. Um, I have a PowerPoint I can go through. I can save that for, um, next week if, if you would like, um, and happy to answer any questions.
I'd, I'd say save it because we've already seen it and it's more the public who's going to want to see it, so. Unless someone else feels differently? All right. Thanks. Councilmember Mum? You're unmuted.
You're unmuted. Sorry. That sounds smart, Chris. I'm fine with that. But my question is, since we have tabled the pipeline item and the other issue for the ordinance, it's pretty much an internal issue with accounting if we want to consolidate this meeting somehow.
So you're suggesting that we cancel the legislative session, essentially? Or move it to 3:30?
Well, or, we could consolidate it at 3:30 or move the 3:30 to the 6:00. It just seems there's, it's such a sharp meaning, it's one item.
Right.
And it really isn't anything than just re-characterizing the count.
Right. Any feedback from council members?
I guess the only other thing to think about is this is only a first reading of the ordinance, uh, not the final adoption, so if that labors your thinking at all.
Right.
But we have another ordinance that we'll be voting on, so.
Yep.
There's only one vote that night and then the first, the first, um, reading ordinance is-
And the vote is also on an accounting thing. I mean, it's, yeah, so it's not a big lift. So I'm just trying to save everybody time, and we could move the 3:30 to 6:00 and do it, do that briefing then, or by first and move the 6:00 down to 3:30. It just, it's going to be very short.
Yeah. Well, I usually prefer to move the 6:00 to 3:30 because so many staff come to the 3:30 instead of making them tune in at 6:00. Um, so I'd entertain a motion to-
I'll go-
Go, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay. Yeah, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, move our remaining legislative session items to our 3:30 briefing session next week.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. Uh, with that, is there a motion to approve next week's advanced agendas as modified?
So moved. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed-
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right. That agenda, uh, there were two people who seconded it, but, uh-
I thought Kate was one of them, but I'm not sure. Oh.
I think, I think Councilmember Mum seconded it. I think I was the, the first.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. That brings us to today's consent agenda, and there, uh, are three requests of items to be added by suspending the rules. Items 12, 13, and 14. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion about suspending the rules to add items to our consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed nay? Any abstentions?
Second.
Okay. All right. The rules are suspended. Uh, matter number 12, which is the tentative agreement for a five-year contract with Lieutenant and Captain's Association, is there a motion to add that to, to today's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? Abstentions? All right. Item 12 is added, and unless there's an objection, I was going to move, or I'm looking for a motion to add items 13 and 14, which are simply accepting reports from the city clerk on the filing of two initiatives. And if we vote yes on them, it simply, I believe, goes to the city clerk. Looking to Mr. Piccolo, not the city clerk, the hearing examiner is the next step if we accept the report.
Correct. The council has the option if you want to, to place these two initiatives on to the ballot on your own, uh, motion. I don't think the council has, has ever taken that step like you could. So we have processed these two initiatives with the sponsors. The clerk has a report to present, uh, and then you forward it to the hearing examiner for him to prepare the non-binding legal opinion, and then it'll come back to the city council before you direct the petitioners to go start collecting signatures.
Okay.
I do believe the city clerk might have something to add to this. I don't want to take away Lori's chance to report.
We'll get, no, we'll get to her report. I just want people to know that by voting yes on this, we're just accepting the report as opposed to putting it on the ballot. That's-
Correct.
Yeah. So. Um, Councilmember Stratton?
So if, let's just say, um, Mr. Piccolo, that we vote, that we voted to put it on the ballot, when would that, um, election be? When would that?
You could put it on for either of the, um, primary or the general election. There's still time.
Okay.
I believe that, I believe the deadline for the November election is for the council to pass the resolution by the first part of August, by the primary date.
Okay. Thanks.
So I'm looking for- So, I'm looking for a motion to add items 13 and 14 to our consent agenda. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion about adding them to our consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of adding them to the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. They're added to our agenda.
Pardon.
I haven't had any other, oh, wait, do I? Yes. Apologies.
Council president, do you want me to read the report in?
Not yet, but we'll get to that. There is another request to put in special budget ordinance on our legislative agenda to fund the lieutenant's and captain's contract in the amount of $1,095,000, and that would be ordinance C-36046. Is there a motion to add that to tonight's legislative agenda?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about adding to the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of adding to this evening's agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. That's added to the agenda. And now, Madam Deputy City Clerk, if you want to read the reports for 13 and 14, and then we'll go ahead and have you read the consent agenda for a vote.
All right. So 13 and 14 right now, and then just go back and.
Yeah.
Okay. On April 22nd, 2021, Jennifer Thomas filed a proposed initiative regarding a charter amendment adopting the Spokane Cleaner Energy Protection Act with the office of the city clerk. On April 23rd, Ms. Thomas followed up by filing a substitute version of the initiative. In addition, on April 22nd, Michael Allen filed a proposed initiative regarding a charter amendment adopting the Spokane Legislative Salary Act. Pursuant to SMC 2.02.230, the city attorney's office reviewed both measures, and in consultation with the sponsors, prepared ballot titles and summaries of the measures pursuant to SMC 2.02.040 and City Charter Section 125. Upon receiving this report from the city clerk, the city council may reject the initiative measures and respectively propose other ones dealing with the same subjects to be considered as council legislation and submit to the voters on its own motion, or submit the respective initiative measures to the voters on its own motion. If the city council does not submit the initiative measures to the voters, the initiatives and the ballot titles and summaries of the measures will be forwarded to the city clerk, by the city clerk, to the city hearing examiner, who shall issue a formal written opinion as to the legal validity and effect of the proposed measures. Okay? And consent agenda. Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchase from Western State's CAT Spokane for a CAT backhoe using Sourcewell Contract Number 032119, C-A-T, $136,632.36. Two, two-year value blanket with Fastenal, Inc., Bothell, Washington, for inventory management services to include vending machines and products in said machines, estimated annual expenditure $250,000, including taxes. Council sponsor, council member Wilkerson. Three, two-year contract renewal with Overhead Door Corp., Nation Serv, Spokane Valley, Washington, for overhead garage door slash electric gate maintenance from June 1st, 2021, through May 31st, 2023, estimated annual expenditure $150,000. Council sponsor, council member Wilkerson. Number four, inter-local cooperation agreement between the city of Newport and the city of Spokane for hearing examiner services, $3,000 revenue. Council sponsor, council member Wilkerson. Number five, amendment to memorandum of understanding between Spokane County and City Police Department in conjunction with the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs for behavioral health unit grant funding, $72,230. Council sponsor, council member Kinnear. Number six, contract amendment slash extension with Neutron Holdings, Inc., doing business as Lime, San Francisco, California, for shared mobility bike share. Council sponsor, council president begs. Number seven, contract amendment with Wilson &amp; Company, Newport, Washington, for additional costs to complete BNSF inspection work associated with COS, Regal, Cleveland, Grace Water and Sewer Replacement Project, increase of $10,600. Total contract amount $149,260. Council sponsor, council president begs. Number eight, contract amendment with KNL Gates, LLP, Saddle, Washington, to act as outside special counsel, providing legal advice and counsel to the city regarding energy productions and sales, renewable energy initiatives and options, increase of $55,000. Total contract amount $165,000. Council sponsor, council president begs. Number nine, low bid awards of A. National Native American Construction, Inc., Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, for Highway 902 transmission main replacement, $567,765. An administrative reserve of $56,776.50, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. West Hills Neighborhood, council sponsor, council president begs. B. William Winkler Company, Newman Lake, Washington, for Cycle 8, 2019 school safety, $1,476,895.60. An administrative reserve of $147,689.56, which is 10% of the contact, contract price, will be set aside. Various neighborhoods, contract sponsor, council president begs. Number 10, report of the mayor of pending claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through April 23rd, 2021, total $10,203,846.91, with Parks and Library claims approved by their respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library total $7,935,689.60. 11, city council meeting minutes, April 19th, 2021.
You can go ahead and read 12 through 14, too.
Number 12, tentative agreement for five-year contract with Lieutenant's and Captain's Association from 2017 through 2021, relates to special budget ordinance C-36046. Council sponsors, council members Cathcart and Kinnear. Number 13, city clerk report on initiative number 2021-2 filed by Jennifer Thomas regarding a charter amendment adopting the Spokane Clean, Cleaner Energy Protection Act. Number 14, city clerk report on initiative 2021-3 filed by Michael Allen regarding a charter amendment adopting the Spokane Legislative Salary Act.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor of adopting this afternoon's consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. The consent agenda is adopted as read. That brings us to the end of our briefing session, and we'll see everyone at 6:00 PM. We're adjourned. Thanks.